Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call those Orangeburg County Council Meeting of January 22nd, 2019 to order. We ask that you bow your head for a moment of thanks. By God, we thank you for this day and for all the people that have come out to attend our meeting tonight. And as we proceed, we pray for your guidance in all our decision-making, that it will always benefit the majority of the people and promote positive growth and prosperity in our county. And for those times when we have to agree to disagree, we ask that you help us to do it in a civil manner. These are all blessings we ask. Amen. Again, we welcome you to our meeting and we'd like to say our whole council have had the opportunity to look at the minutes and we would want to ask for a motion to second that the minutes of the January 7th meeting be approved.
We have not so moved that we approve the minutes as printed.
Moved by Mr. Johnny Ravenel and seconded by Ms. Loris that the minutes be approved as written.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to discuss approval of the minutes for information, if it is not taken correctly for the sake of being informed. I think the minutes reflect that it was stated in our last meeting that the chairman could not vote when there was a time. According to our bylaw and constitution, the chairmanship should vote in all cases, except when he may have a personal conflict. I just want that to be known. And also, one other case that didn't mention, when a decision of the chair has been appealed from, the chair cannot vote on his own decision. It must be done by the body. Thank you very much for this discussion.
Thank you so very much. All in favor of the minutes being approved, please let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the ayes have it and the motion is carried. Again, we welcome you to our meeting and at the beginning of our meetings, we have public comments of two areas. We have public comments of agenda items and public comments of other matters. Agenda item, if there's an item on the agenda that has public hearings, like the audits or number two, you will wait until that time for, to comment on that. But for any other agenda items, if you have anything to say, you may come up at this time.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephanie Atkins. I'm counsel over Utahville. I'm here on behalf of our citizens. In the past eight months, we've had an increase in the number-
Stephanie, is this an agenda item?
No, sir.
Okay, hold one second. If anybody have any comment on agenda items, hearing none, we'll open it for comment on any other matter.
You had a young lady had this. Your finger was up. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, Stephanie, now.
Thank you.
You've got two areas. Okay, one's agenda and the other's.
Okay. In the past eight months, we've had an increase in the number of complaints to our town hall about EMS and sheriff's department response times in our area. We've had reports of people waiting for assistance forty minutes or longer. And we've also had a lot of complaints about the lack of coverage at the EMS station in Utahville. At a recent town meeting, a concerned citizen came forward and asked about forming a petition. So in the past three weeks, that's what we've done. We've done a petition and we have roughly 1,200 signatures. Signatures from people in Utahville, Holly Hill, Santee and Vance. A young girl, she shared her story on Facebook that she lost her father on October 7th. The first ambulance that arrived did not have the equipment needed and they had to wait on a second ambulance to come. So our concerns are, we just want some consistency with the EMS. We know we only have five ambulances, I believe, for the county. So is this a funding issue? I know we have been contracting services out for other counties to come in and help, but we just want to shed some light on the situation that's happening in our area of the county. Thank you.
Stephanie, for the record, what's your last name again?
Atkins.
Atkins.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your information and I guess, Mr. Minister Squid, would you want to say anything at this time? Or you want to just take it as information?
Yeah, I would like to see petition or meet with someone in regards to your issues and complaints so that we may address it. We do have six ambulances, but they rotate. And the one in your area was previously at the crossroads near Holly Hill and then we moved it to Utahville because of the conditions of that station to try to help get better coverage in that area. So the EMS service is a service that is hampered and I'm not trying to speak for the sheriff as well, but what we have seen is through a salary study that we've had, it's hard for us to recruit and keep individuals because of the neighboring counties and what they're paying. And you basically get paid more for less work in the other counties than you do with 1,100 square miles that you have to deal with in our county. County council has given us the approval to do a salary study, which we have done and completed. And the first part of that implementation is to go towards the sheriff's department's public works and emergency services to try to make sure that we can be competitive in those fields to help with response time to the citizens in those areas. We can outline all the details on that and then also show you the amount of call items that unfortunately because of the distance between Utahville and Orangeburg, sometimes we get blatant calls that are basically not emergent in response and we end up wasting time and effort bringing those individuals to Orangeburg and only seeing them walk right out the front door and get in the car and go somewhere else. Not saying that's all the time and I'm not saying anything about the instance you referred to because I would have to research it. I would hope to meet with someone from the town and discuss your issues if you say this was something that came up. At a town meeting, you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you talked to the director of emergency services, anyone about the issues or?
Me personally, no, sir.
Okay, all right, well, we-
This was just to shed some light, but you know, we have roughly 1,200 people who have concerns about it. So I guess this is our way to say to the county.
Well, in the future, we want to work on this, but you know, I wouldn't wait till you get 1,200 signatures. Anything dealing with the county, if you have any problems or issues, call me direct and we'll be willing to, you know, try to work on it or see what we can do to fix it. And I definitely, this is definitely a priority. Counsel has made it a priority already by issuing us the ability to do the salary study and make the changes. That will help in the recruitment because that's the biggest issue. We probably have some fifteen, twenty paramedic slots that are unfilled right now because we cannot find anyone to fill them. Same thing with the sheriff's department, not trying to speak for the sheriff, but I know we have fifteen to eighteen positions that are open right now and it's hard getting certified people in because of what we were paying. So with the salary upgrades that are about to come, you should see a difference in how our emergency services handle throughout the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Minister Squid, and thank you, Ms. Atkins, for bringing the information. There's a lot of challenges. As I alluded to the mayor earlier, there's a lot of challenges in a large county like this and we are not the Lone Rangers if we go across and talk to other people, a lot of other places too. I realize that, you know, when we're talking about lives and timeframe, it makes it different. And you know, and sometimes you like to pull the records because sometimes fifteen minutes can seem like forty-five to certain people when you really need it. Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir?
I'd like to mention also, a lot of times EMS get called out. When the 911 call goes in, an ambulance is going to come sometime. A lot of times, I've heard, you know, dispatchers say the person has flu-like symptoms. Now, you don't need to send anyone out to a flu-like center, but it happens. They got to go. And it takes a lot of time to respond to calls like that, that really that person automatically went to the doctor or whatever. It's tough.
Mr. Loris?
I don't have any questions.
Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Susan Graegan. I'm a resident of the Utahville area, one of those who signed the petition. Came down here about eleven years ago from a county that's about the same size, a rural county that even has a lot of Amish amennite in it. That county doesn't seem to have as much of a problem with their EMS in that state as there is here. I will simply say that I cannot tell you how many neighbors I have talked to who say that if they have to call EMS, they are now at this point seriously thinking of taking the risk of driving outside the county to Berkeley County and calling the Berkeley County EMS. That's how unsure they are about getting services from the EMS operations in Orangeburg County. The other thing I will say is, and this is probably rumor, but I'm going to say it, the word is going around that the effort is to close down the Utahville EMS and move it to Bowman. I would hope that is not in your consideration. That would make EMS services even less likely to occur on the east end of the county. We have enough lack of services the way it is. We don't need to lose that one EMS station that we currently have on the east end of the county. I've heard of people making a call for a serious matter and calling a second time an hour later because they still hadn't received EMS. If that EMS station gets moved further away, it's going to be worse. Thank you very much.
Susan, what's your last name again?
Graegan, G-R-A-G-A-N.
Ms. Graegan, I have to take that.
I guarantee you, we ain't moving it.
Ah, that's the best thing I've heard.
Well, no, that is rumor because we already have a station in Bowman.
All right, well, that was the rumor that was going around. So I'm delighted to hear that that is on the record, that that is not an effort. My main reason for coming here was to try and encourage you not to let that happen.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Mary Affred. I'm a citizen of Orangeburg County. I'm here tonight because I lost my grandson to somebody eighth, TRNC. He was in an accident and when he came, he waited three hours before he was able to be transferred somewhere else. But he died before that time. My grandson's name is Cavante Shuler. He's not here to talk for himself. So here's a picture of my grandson, a little boy with a big smile. And when you saw him, he would smile and he'd smile back. I'm here to stay as a citizen of Orangeburg County. No one's grandchild should come to a hospital and not come back home. We need a better trauma unit here in Orangeburg and I'm asking this council to please do something for us so our grandchildren and our loved ones can come home. It hurts knowing that people that's in charge of our children's health and lives seems like they're so slack. My grandbaby deserves to be here today. I deserve to hold him. I deserve to fuss over him when he left that hospital, that he didn't come back out. He waited three hours to be transferred somewhere.
My name is Laquisha Muller. I'm Cavante Shuler's mother. I was there from the time they called me. They told me that the accident occurred. They took all the wrong foot cautious for my child. They don't have a trauma unit. My child was ejected from the car. They knew that. They took him out the ditch. That was a seven-year-old baby. And they sit there and they waited three and a half hours and didn't do anything. Just went saying his arm was broken and he went to somewhere else, to somewhere else, to somewhere else. They don't have a trauma unit. They don't have surgicals at the hospital to be transported.
To be transported, it isn't fair and I don't want this to happen to no other child.
So y'all, please listen to us.
Our children deserve to be, should be seen immediately. Anyone that's been in an accident, they should be seen immediately and not have to be waiting shipped somewhere else. We need a better trauma unit. I saw zero level trauma unit at the hospital.
Zero.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. I agree with you.
On behalf of the council, I'd like to say we send you our sympathies and I'm sorry that this happened to your family.
I have a petition. This is only one of petitions that I've been able to collect today of other people who feel the same way.
Ma'am, can you tell me what was the date of that petition?
July 7th.
And can you give me the spell?
2018.
Can you give me the correct spell? I don't know his name. Thank you.
I put my grandson at grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? That's all. We will close the, um, close the comments of our meeting and go into our regular meeting. Resolution in the audience. First item on the agenda is a resolution ordering Cheryl Fanger Jeffcourt on her retirement from Orangeburg County Council on Aging. And it reads as follows. Whereas the members of Orangeburg County Council wish to recognize and congratulate Cheryl Jeffcourt upon her retirement after thirty years and six months of service to the county of Orangeburg. Whereas upon graduating from Wade Hampton Academy and the University of South Carolina, she began working with Calhoun County Council on Aging where she served faithfully for five years. And whereas on June 13th, 1988, she began service as an executive director of the Orangeburg County Council on Aging. Whereas Cheryl Jeffcourt has accomplished much through her ability to work diligently as a director, people person and administrator of the Council on Aging. Whereas during this time and period, this time period, she maintained a staff of six full-time and fourteen part-time employees. And she also kept up with many volunteers, approximately forty of them, on a daily basis. This was necessary to properly serve and to keep the organization in Orangeburg County serving the many elderly citizens whom were in need of council on aging services. And whereas under Cheryl Jeffcourt's leadership, the council on aging provided many services including meals on wheels, group dining meals, homemaker service, recreational activities and the senior trip program. Now therefore, it be resolved that Orangeburg County Council does hereby recognize and congratulate Cheryl upon her retirement from the Orangeburg County Council on Aging Inc. and her dedicated service to the county of Orangeburg. Be it resolved that this 22nd day of January, 2019, a copy of this resolution shall be spread across the permanent written record of Orangeburg County. Tested by attorney Anne Portee, clerk due, county council, and county attorney, senior chair. Can I get a motion to second passed, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the resolution.
Second. Moved by Mr. Willie B. Orange and seconded by Mr. Hillary Livingston. If we pass the resolution ordering Cheryl Jeffcourt, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Item two is a third reading. This is an audience adopting the Bailey Bill providing for special property tax, assessment for rehabilitated historic properties and other related matters. Mr. Minister Squid, for those folks who may not have been here or either a turn-in or which one, just give a summary of what this is all about for those folks who may not have been here for the previous two readings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a part of the effort that was presented to us by DOR to use the tax credits that are allowed through Bailey Bill to help with the renovation, rehabilitation of historic properties in the downtown Orangeburg area. This would be allow the county to approve this as a part of the Bailey Bill to allow for those tax incentives that would be used as a part of the rehabilitation effort to rehabilitate those downtown properties. And you're to determine for any specific tax cohesion.
There are no other issues.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion to second or third reading?
Move to chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Hillary Livingston and seconded by Mr. Lawrence Fraser for third reading on this audience. All in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Chair.
And opposed?
I appreciate if you open a motion for debate and sometimes I do have a concern and I wish to express my concern.
Yes, sir.
My concern is this, that I'm not aware of the people on that committee. And I'm not sure of the downtown area, what it includes. I know previously when I looked at it, it did not include some of the areas I thought it should include. So I don't want any area to be excluded because the downtown revitalization board did not put it in downtown. I know some areas that should have been in downtown that are not in downtown. And that's very historical, as far as I'm concerned. And that bothers us all now and I need to express that.
And I appreciate you expressing that. Any other expressions from anybody else? Thank you so much. Again, all in favor of passing the third reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Five ayes, one nay, ma'am clerk. Thank you so much. Item three is audits and second reading in a public hearing. This is an audit amending the Orangeburg County Flood Damage Prevention Audit to add a section regarding reasonably safe from flooding. Minister Squid, I'm going to ask for a summary on that, then I'll open the full public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a recommendation through the South Carolina DNR. It has reviewed our ordinances and our flood policies and has been in the process of reviewing the flood ordinances for all forty-six counties. And they found one mandated changes by the law and recommended that we review, after review, that we add that Orangeburg County add a section that regarding reasonably safe from flooding to our flood ordinance.
Floor is open for public hearing. Anyone have anything from the public about this? Hearing none, counsel? On this?
As you recall, Mr. Chairman, it may have been about a year ago when Senator Lindsey Graham came down to us and we had a discussion. And I made a statement that we need a study of the water damage here in Orangeburg County. Because a lot of areas in Orangeburg County do flood. And this is a low county and we have a problem with water. And he stated that he would do something about it. Have you heard anything from him?
I think he said that he was going to talk to someone, the Corps of Engineers, and I think that-
I asked that the Corps of Engineers do a study.
I think that that was something we started and I think they, I don't know where we at in that process, Mr. Young, but I think Mr. Staley and the Corps have met a couple of times, but I don't know where they at.
Can we follow up and get a statement in terms of what's being done?
Yes, and we're actually in the process of studying the area and pulling together meetings for both watersheds as we speak.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any other comments from anyone? If not, can I get a motion and-
I move that we approve.
The second reading.
Second reading.
Moved by Mr. Willie B. Orange, seconded by Mr. Johnny Ravenel for second reading on this audience. Say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Planning Commission Resolution in the audience, first reading. This is to change the zoning designation of the following parcels of land, tax map number 0173-07-13-015, at 441 Frederick Street in Orangeburg, Mr. Charles Brown Senior. And he wants to change it from residential general to commercial general different. Mr. Minister Squid, any comments on those?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission met on January 9th, 2019 to discuss the request from Charles Brown Senior to have his property at 491 Frederick Street, Council District 5, rezoned from residential general to residential commercial general. The property is made up of three lots and it's being combined and they are currently vacant. The lots were cleared of debris, the combined lots from two streets, Chestnut Avenue and Frederick Street. Three-fourths of the lots had fallen in flood plain and were characterized by the two percent annual flood. There are several other commercial uses within that area, a barber shop, a ABC store and a pharmacy. These properties are contiguous to the east of the proposed zoning area and the property owner who owns the property in a general vicinity voiced their concerns. And although that particular property owner does not live in that area, there was no other public comment and the planning commission voted unanimously to approve the approval of the request.
You've heard the explanation and the summary from the administrative council?
Move.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Harry Willey, seconded by Mr. Willie B. Orange. For first reading of the audit on the changing designation for these properties. All in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to speak to that, please, sir.
Well, that's why I asked before you, you did it. Go ahead.
If you didn't call for them.
All right, go ahead. Yes, sir. I want to ask the council.
Annie Cooper Smith, the chairman of District 5, is not here.
Yes, sir.
She asked, need to express her concern that she's not here because she's sick.
Yes, sir.
And I do support her ever because we usually ask who district is it in and they ask that council member that she has any objection.
Spoke to her and she told you that she don't have no objection.
She doesn't have any objection.
Appreciate it. Any other comments?
And please, sir, ask for a discussion on the motion.
Well, when he finished, when he did the summary, then I said, "Counsel," that's what I meant there.
Well, I didn't know you meant that.
Okay, I apologize. I'll try to be a little more specific. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Any other comments? All right. The motion has been moved to second.
I have a question.
You can't, you're already, we had public comments, so that's why we have public comments. If you have something to say, you have to say it in a public comment.
Thank you. This is my first time coming to this meeting, so I did not know that that's what that meant at that time.
Well, I'm sorry if I didn't explain. I said if you have public comments on any items on the agenda at that time, unless it had a public hearing, this first reading don't have a public hearing. It will have a public hearing in second reading, but it don't have a public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. It has been moved to second. All in favor of first reading, please let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Procurement, physically, yeah, 19-0115, Riddick Street Community Center Project. Minister Squid, I suppose we only had one hit on that or whatever.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That's correct. This was a proposal- This was a proposal that was requested for a design bill, so it's a little bit unique because the bill would have to come within the design criteria of the community and the group that is requesting the facility. And the requests for proposals were requested and prepared FY 190115. The proposals were advertised, and they were due on January 15, 2019. Received one proposal. The local, state, and N B A preferences were given. The highest ranking recommended vendor is for Paragon Builders in the amount of 498, 997, and is deemed responsible for the bid recommended by the purchasing department.
Okay, Mr. Orange, this is-
That's a not to exceed figure because with the design bill, it can be cheaper than that, but it's not to exceed that amount.
Who district, this is yours?
Counselman Ove.
Orange?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any comments?
I move that we approve.
Your comment?
That's my comment.
I get a second.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Willie B. Orange, and seconded by Mr. Lawrence, that we approved the procurement as explained by the Administrit.
I have a comment, I just like to know where it is. Where's the location on Whittaker?
It's actually off of Whittaker Street, not Whittaker Parkway. So it's actually Whittaker Street, which is off of, it's off of like going 33, like you're going towards Husvorn. It's one of the loop roads that cuts off 33 to back in there. So it's actually, it is actually Whittaker Street. A lot of people get that confused with Whittaker Parkway.
It's visible from Whittaker, I mean 33.
Yes, sir.
222 Whittaker.
All in favor, say aye or not? And any opposed? The ayes have it, and the motions carried. Appointment of Board and Commission. Someone make that appointment for me, please, for District One and Second.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved, we accept Mayor Jenkins for District One for the Human Affairs Commission.
Moved by Mr. Harry Willey, and seconded by Mr. Ravenell, that we accept Mr. Mayor Jenkins to serve on the County Human Relation Council. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motions carried. Next item is an update from the Public Works Committee, and I yield to its chairperson, Mr. Johnny Ravenell.
Chairman and counsel, we had a little discussion on one item on our agenda about the loss of damage to county roads. We didn't come to any conclusions, and we don't care at fault.
Thank you so much. All right, I was going to have a vote on the second, I mean, the motion is second for vote for executive session, which is contractual matters concerning the Orangeburg County broadband. And number two, legal review of exemption, of legal advice. Can I get a motion to second for those two items?
To move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Willey, and seconded by Ms. Fraser. If we go into executive session for those two items, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the motions carried. Before we ask for a motion for adjournment, any council person got any comments? Orange, no comment, you all right?
Yes, sir, I'm all right.
All right, now everybody, okay. Well, we appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and thank you so much. Can I get a motion to second for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'd just like to recognize the Give a Child a Dream group that sponsored, the foundation that sponsored the MLK celebration yesterday at the county's MLK statue across the street. They had a good turnout. Also, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Henry Summers, who came in and helped with the logistics on that, for that particular event, as well as our clerk and counsel and several other employees. But it was a great turnout, and it was good to see that monument be put in use for MLK celebration.
Thank you all, thank all of y'all who came out. I appreciate all you do, and Madam Clerk, I hope that we make sure we have some warm clothes for you next time. See, it takes a lot of clothes, because it was cold yesterday, so anybody who braved the cold, that's a good deal. Thank you again so very much, and thank y'all for coming out. Motion second for adjournment. And I've got a motion second.
You did second.
I did.
Lawrence, second. Thank you all again.